Okay, we're live.
Okay, we're live. And everybody knows that when you speak, speak from this podium here. The camera's on you. If you have any fans or family or whoever watching you speak, you know, they want to hear you. So this is, as you know, a meeting planning board, June 17th. And I guess the first order of business is to call, roll call.
Rupert Fredde.
Here.
Stephen Deeslo.
He is absent with real cause. He didn't have the baby, but his wife did. But, you know, as the saying goes, he has real cause.
Thomas Cunningham.
Present.
Dr. Neal.
Here.
Mark Cready.
Mark is traveling. So he's absent with cause. So.
Mr. Chairman, you have three members present, or Vice Chairman, you have three members present.
Okay. So moving right along. Chairman's announcements, other than the baby born to one of our members. I don't have any announcements. Does anybody have anything else to bring up at this point? Okay. If I drop the tone of my voice, if you would put your hand up if you can't hear me, okay? I'm not a public speaker. Spoke to a lot of people over my years, but it was mostly one-on-one, you know? So on to site reviews, I guess. S U S C A, SUSCA, 15 Tellier Road is first on the agenda.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Is that on?
Good evening, gentlemen.
I don't know.
Push the button if the red light's on.
This is maybe better.
Now it's on.
So Gail Hallick, Seer from Gail Hallick, Architect Incorporated. Good to see you all again. And Pete Suska is the owner. So we have a house in Breakwater Village that is going to be torn down and rebuilt. So we are going to be asking for relief on Breakwater Special Village District Section 4.8.1.5 and 4.8.1.6C and 4.8.1.6F. We are going to be tearing it down. And you can see the existing footprint there. It is a one-story cottage, which is at the end of its life. And we will be putting a new house in that is two stories. And the new footprint is actually smaller than the old footprint. And this is my first time doing this, but what I am doing is taking advantage of that 15% modification that we now have as of January 1st, 2024. So you will see with my floor plans, which, thank you. The dimensions of those floor plans basically fit into, do you have the one that, the new one by Chris Palmer, the site plan?
I have the proposed site plan.
Yeah. All right. So you can see the existing new, thank you, the existing new setback lines. And as I understand it, we can go 15% more and ask for a variance on that without too much trouble. So you can sort of see this line here is right at the 15. So the way I calculated it was 15% less than the existing setback. And so that makes it 7.1s feet from the property line. And that, you know, without going all the way around, I did the same thing. Now, we have a, right here, we have a front door hood, which is 6.4 feet, according to Chris, from that front yard. And I had thought that that was within the 15% modification plus an allowance for the roof overhang. But evidently, it's supposed to be 6.6 square feet. So we're asking for an additional .2 square feet over what I think that allowance is for the 15% modification. And I'm doing that because they'd like to have a hood over the front door. Can we have something that shows the front? There. So that kind of defines the facade, and it also provides an entry protection as they walk in. Now, as an entry protection, it is kind of small. It's only 2'10 1/2 inches, which is, you know, little, but it fits a person underneath it while they're taking their key out with their grocery bags in their hand. The height is, again, something that we took advantage of that modification, added the 15%. And other than that, and the sun deck as well. So the FAR, all of those have been taken as the present code. And then I added or subtracted the 15% according to what, you know, was more favorable for my client. So that is kind of what I did. So I'm open for questions.
Well, you probably know that the variances that you're asking for, for better or for worse, because of the change, and you alluded to it, the changes of the rules, regulations, et cetera, with the 15% modification, allow most of those to be, I guess, other than, was it the front yard setback?
Yes.
Is the only one not qualifying. Front yard, can you put that up again? The one question I would ask, I think we talked about this, is the distance, the distance here when you get out of your car or somebody comes out of the house in a hurry, is the road right here?
Yeah, you can see the, yeah.
Didn't we talk about that, about is there a way? I don't know exactly what way would be aesthetic, but to put some way of a barrier here, I don't know. It just, it's so short, you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
To come running out of there, I think somebody alluded to it, especially if you have children, they're out in the road in a few seconds.
Do you think planting would do that or some kind of a curb?
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
Planting, like a little hedge?
Or a hedge or something, yeah. Well, anything that would stop them but not affect you aesthetically, I would think.
It would, just as long as we have that three feet from the front door, I think, you know, we could have some kind of planting or, you know, a cobblestone curb or something, probably at the property line, do you think?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Would you be willing to do that, Pete?
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, I'm totally fine with the 15%. I have a question for staff. This special use permit for expansion greater than 25% of the footprint, it seems to me that it's smaller than the footprint, the original footprint? So I don't know why that special use permit.
I believe, was the, I'm going to ask you a quick question. Was the original structure, is it one story or is it two stories?
It's one story.
So that's why it's considered a 25% increase, because the second floor is an increase.
Oh, okay. So it's not the footprint, it's the, okay.
No, it's not just the footprint.
Got it. I don't have any other questions or thoughts on it.
Tom?
I'm good with it. I just, you said the house is past its useful life. When was the house built?
1950.
1950?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it? No questions? Okay. Anything else you folks want to add to the presentation? So I guess we need movements, motions?
Chairman, I move that.
Whoops. Oh, staff, yeah. Wait, wait.
Oops, great, sorry.
Mr. General, we're also, it just, did you want to ask if anyone in the room has any questions on the project?
What a good idea. You see, you see how often I do this, right? Anyone out in the audience want to comment or ask questions of the presenter? No, moving along. Thank you, Jill.
So make a motion on tax assessors plat M lot 167-34, 15 Tellier Road is complete and consistent with the land use section on the comprehensive plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, three in favor. Moving right along now.
I make a motion that tax assessors plat M lot 167-34, 15 Tellier Road recommended in the affirmative to the zoning board with, with staff report of May 14, 25.
And Ryan?
Excuse me. Would you like to incorporate the condition regarding the plantings along the property line that you had just spoke?
Good point. Adding a condition of, of plantings or some barrier along the property line to keep, so keep a little bit of a break further in the road.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, three love. Go in peace, as they say. Yeah, moving right along. The next issue before us is the Gibson Court Condominium Association Tax Assessor Plat E Lot 34 CM. The summary on this one is interesting because I go back to the, to the days when we saw this property come before this board. The applicant is submitting a request to amend the condition from a previous zoning board approval dated March 18th, 1987. Property is located High Water Table, which is not relevant here. So the existing conditions, it's 4.4 acres, as you may know, located our 10 zoning district, developed as a condominium association, and the proposal is amendment to condition number 13 of March 18, 1987, zoning decision specifically to permit the removal of the emergency access gate. Proposed building lot coverage doesn't change, proposed site coverage does not change.
Good evening. My name is Karen Olivera. I'm the president of the association, Gibson Court Condo Association. And just to give the board some background, in 2021, we embarked on a project to remove an old fence. It was almost 40 years old, and the gate was part of that fence. The fence was enclosed mainly in the Prospect Court area, going all the way down to the following street. So we had one of our board members, Christopher Canton, come to the town hall to make sure that nothing that we were proposing would be a violation of any, you know, zoning ordinance or whatever. So he did come to the town hall, he did report back to the board that he did speak with someone. Of course, he didn't take down that person's name. And unbeknownst to us, well, what we did was we removed the fence, which was in grave disrepair. It was really unsightly. Included in that, we decided as a board to remove the gate. And we were not aware of the recorded special condition. But essentially, along the way, over the years, the gate has not served its purpose. Because originally, when the project was approved by the planning board and it was zoned, it was to be used for emergency purposes only. Because when you enter in Gibson Court, Garden Court Drive is a complete cul-de-sac. It's a circle. So if there's an emergency truck, a fire truck, a rescue wagon, it's difficult to go around and then go back out Gibson. And they, the intent is to let the emergency vehicle go out Prospect Court. So that gate, along the years, and this is a picture of with winter snow melt. So we did, we submitted, the highway department for the town would plow snow up against the gate. And then because the gate couldn't be opened at that point, our snowplow contractor would plow snow against the gate, and the gate would be completely unusable for emergency vehicles during the winter months. And this has been year after year after year. In the, in the fall months, debris and leaves, and sometimes as high as three or four feet against the gate, that would, we'd find that. And when the, when the landscapers went to clean up, we'd have to open the gate and actually have to clean Prospect Court because it appeared that the people who lived on Prospect Court more or less use it as a fence and not really as a gate. So in those two seasons, we found there's a lot of obstruction, and it really lost its purpose to be used as an emergency exit. So what we did do though, and I included this in the application, and again, it was innocent on our part, we sent notices out to everybody saying we're going to have, we had asphalt put on the road. It used to be a dirt road. And we moved the gate and the fence. And we instructed the unit owners in, and it's consistent with the use of that gate in Prospect Court, that we, you know, the unit owners are never allowed to use Prospect Court for any reason. The entrance and exit to Gibson Court is going to be Gibson Avenue. It always has been, and it's never anything other than that. So we did instruct the unit owners at that point. We did the project, we did the road. This is a picture of the gate and the fence removed. We did put these two signs up saying no trespassing of people coming in from Prospect. That's a view from Prospect into Gibson. So we didn't, so that project was done in 2022, and I didn't hear from anyone until 2023. I received a notice from Mr. Permentil, I addressed the issue with him, and here we are today. So in reviewing the 1987 conditions, we want to maintain consistency that no one is to use that exit or entrance except emergency vehicles. And none of our unit owners do, we have it on our rules and regulations that they're not to use it. But we just believe that now it's so, it's so much easier to use because the gate acted more like an obstruction than this emergency exit. And I wasn't involved, and you were obviously in 1987 when it was originally proposed. But I would imagine, you know, back then, there weren't a lot of condo developments, and there was, and taking out the fence actually added to the blending in of the condo association to the surrounding properties. We take great pride in very well maintaining the property. And again, like I said, in the, in the fall months, we would actually open the gate and have our landscaper, and sometimes, and I witnessed that, it was as high as three or four feet tall with leaves and debris. Sometimes we'd find pallets leaned up against the gate from the people who live on Prospect Court, mainly because I think over time, it became like a fence to them and not really a gate. We're more than willing to work with the town to do whatever it deems fit because it's gone, and we're kind of, we kind of asked for forgiveness and not permission. We didn't realize that as a board, we did our best to do diligence. But after we found out that there was this condition, we felt it was most appropriate to ask that the, only the condition of having a gate required be removed. And that's still the same restriction to you, to not be able to use that Prospect Court opening to enter and exit the premises, be, remain. And we're willing to honor that. And that's communicated to all unit owners, visitors, things like that. So, so I don't, that's really what we're asking for. I did, let me just see what else I wanted to add to that. I myself, when I look at the, the entrance, I think it's a little bit narrow. We have, we had the signs put up, we're willing to put up any signs or even erect a gate if the, if the town so chooses to have us redo a gate. But we think it's, it's cleaner, it's neater, it helps us blend into the whole community. So it's, it, I think it's an enhancement not to have the gate. I think the gate was, especially in the winter, it was just terrible. I mean, in some of the winters, we have, we've had a couple of mild winters last couple of years, but over the years, we've had some, a lot of ice accumulated, and you just couldn't, no one could get through that gate. We have to wait till the snow melts in the, in the springtime. So that's really what we're asking. And we will, you know, we don't think it's that much to ask. I don't know, I know the fire, we initially, when we contacted Mr. Permentil, he had us go, well, he was going to schedule a meeting with the highway department, the fire department to see what their opinion was. Because obviously, the highway department would have greater knowledge of plowing on that street because Prospect is just a very narrow, dead-end street. And I would imagine there's no place else for them to put the snow. But now with the gate open, they have to find a place to put the snow and have to leave it open. And it has been open the last two winters, three winters, no, actually two. We did the project in the spring of 2022. So really, the, the winter of '23 and '24 and '25, it's been open, and we haven't had any problems. And we've had an easier time even plowing even that area because that area right there is part of a semicircle to go around, you know, that we have to plow everything when you drive in. And it's, and it's, it's not, I mean, it is fairly narrow, but I do think it makes it easier. And we've had, we do have some elderly residents, and it's not unusual on a monthly basis that the fire department sends a truck or sends an emergency vehicle. And they have used, we've observed them using that exit. But in the past, it's sometimes if they, for example, if they had to get out of the truck, open the gate, and if it was obstructed, they just couldn't, they'd have to go back out to go to Gibson Court. So, but that's what we're asking. And I don't know if anyone has any questions at all.
As I say, I go back to, when that was all flat. So, so the difficulty here is probably terminology. The idea of, of an emergency access has to be available in that emergency every 30 years or whatever, whenever it comes up. The idea of a fence, the idea of a gate, whatever, as I say, part of, part of the problem, what we were thinking back in those days, the idea of having a solid fence where, where it's never opened, other than this one time, and then you can't get to it because of, well, no, but it's just natural, you, you know, it's the people who live on that dead-end street, why not just blow the leaves up again, you know? So in any case, the idea of a closed gate, to me, that's, it makes it non-useful as an, because the idea of it is it's an emergency exit or entrance. So I think that that terminology has to be changed, is my opinion. You discussed this with the fire department and the people who have the access?
Mr. Permentil did. He, he made note. Give me a second, I'll find it. They did discuss it. During the review process, planning staff consulted with the fire marshal, who expressed no objection to the gate's removal. He noted that provided the area remains clear and is not used for parking or storage, emergency access may be improved because of the removal of the gate, which is consistent with what our perspective on the board is.
Right, right. But the idea of some, did you want to speak?
Yeah, well, I was just going to also.
Oh, Ryan wants to, yeah.
I have written correspondence from the fire marshal from this morning, where he, again, reiterated that he reviewed the current Rhode Island Fire Code, specifically Chapter 18 for fire department access, and much of the requirements provided are about keeping fire department access roads open and accessible. And he is, excuse me, and that it's, his opinion that having an open, accessible road would potentially allow for quicker emergency response to the Gibson Court structures. And then he would like to note, if that was to be the outcome of this amendment, that no parking, that that area remains a no parking area, and it should be kept clear at all
That's great. My colleagues talked to you a little bit here, all I think, okay?
So I have a question for Nick. So is there a standard for reviewing, changing a condition?
Funny ask, I have a note to myself. A note to myself for when this goes to the zoning board, but sitting here tonight, it may simply be the standard special use permit there, evaluating it, excuse me, reevaluating it under that standard.
So not a standard of conditions have changed or?
You know, I, I don't think so, subject to researching this issue.
Yeah.
Thank you, though, good question.
So I don't know if it's appropriate. We're, we're going to suggest like just amending it to just delete.
Delete the condition?
Delete the one condition that requires the gate. Because everything else we're fine with. We don't intend to use that as an exit or an entrance. We just want to eliminate the need for the gate. We did put those signs up. We can put any other signage up, we could, in any other way that the town wants us to, we could add no parking to it. Basically, we're saying, don't, you can't enter. That's what those two signs say.
Yeah. I mean, I'm an advocate for connectivity. That's sort of my preference. And we've had discussions about other connections between subdivisions. On the other hand, I could see the perspective of the folks on the, on the adjoining road and.
In the adjoining road, we actually, when we had the asphalt done, in that picture, you can see it. We finished it out in, onto Prospect Court, the asphalt, to make it dovetail in nicely so there would be no, like, bump or anything like that. But really, we, we believed that it, it was used as like a backyard fence, and people, I found pallets put against it, leaves, debris. But so, the people who lived there, we were used to doing that. And I guess the question was, when they developed it originally, and I wasn't there, how do you treat the fact that Prospect Court is there and it was a dead end to begin with? Because that was just a, years ago, that was just a private parcel of land, a 4.4 acre parcel of land. Because the, years ago, there was, there were two houses on the property, the manor house and the carriage house. And when they came in and developed it, they built four other buildings that kind of looked like it architecturally, but they're newer. But essentially, they're neighbors, but there's so much foliage and there's so much, it looks so much better without the fence, I mean, not the fence, the fence was just.
Yeah, right.
And then cost-wise, from our perspective, very, very expensive to replace that fence. I mean, we had gotten quotes of $150,000.
Yeah, I don't think the fence is even in the issue because that's not one of the conditions.
But the gate was made, in other words, the gate was like part of the fence. So like the fence, when you look from Prospect, it was fence, and then the gate was an extension of the fence. It was just a little bit higher, and it looked like, it looked like a little, an extension of the fence.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, if, if it ended up that we couldn't change the condition, it seems like it could do a gate that's not a wall. And I think that would solve some of the.
The only other type of gate I could think of would be like one of those metal slide, you know, metal swinging gates.
Swing gate, yeah. Or it doesn't have to be metal, it could be, I've seen some very nice timber ones too that are very attractive, but.
But timber just like.
But the other.
What deteriorates over time? I would just, well, whatever, it's not, aesthetically, people might not like that, but I don't, you know, I don't know what other, what other solution.
And then the other thought I had is, so we, we usually go out and visit the site. So I saw the signage and stuff, and I don't know, maybe a sign, there's no sign from the inside toward Prospect Court saying not a through road. And I'm sure you have, I'm sure you have visitors that don't see the rules of the condominium association and properties change hands and stuff, so that, so that might be another, another thing to, would it help the folks along the road make sure it doesn't become a through road?
Absolutely.
Thank you. How many units in Garden Court?
22.
Okay.
Six buildings.
Would you happen, in reading the back? Would you happen, in reading the background here, I understand getting the approval for this was somewhat contentious. It took a negative vote from the planning board and an order from the court to change it, and then the approval was granted as a result of that.
Way back one, right?
Right. And I wondered whether or not there was any, any of the contentiousness had to do with the butters and whether or not those butters were on Prospect Court and whether or not the gate, one of the reasons the gate is there is essentially to assuage any concerns they might have in terms of using that as an entrance and extra into the-
It could have been, I have no idea. I have no way of knowing.
Yeah, so, I mean, that thing, that, that kind of, is kind of rattling around in the back of my head in terms of it might have been, again, and it's just speculation on my part, but just looking at the proximity and knowing it was contentious, whether or not that played a role or not.
If that's the case, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but why have that? Why didn't they just finish it? You could have just put some kind of barrier or something there that, where you'd never have anyone traveling back and forth. You could have, you could have something other than a gate, but the whole purpose of a gate is to open it for emergency vehicles because if you ever see what a fire truck looks like in that place, because the roads are narrow, it's huge, it's a very tight turn. Even when they turned to come out of here, it's a tight turn, but they, usually what happens is one of the firemen get out of the truck and make sure that it's, they're directed out the street. But it's much easier to go that way than it is to go all the way around and navigate, you know, the road.
The reason the case there is Doc was, Doc was here and was sure that there was fire, there was actually fire access in and out, probably more than anything else.
And it could have been, and that probably was the case for people who lived on Prospect Court.
Are any of those units, is there any prohibition or is there any condominium association rules with respect to rentals within the, and they are?
The prohibition is that people cannot rent for less than one year. You have to be renting for a year. There are no Airbnbs currently, there's one unit that's for rent out of all 22, that's number 23. There was one previously for rent, 16, just got sold last week. We're very much on top of that. Everyone else is an owner and everyone pretty much, there are a lot of full-time residents there in each building, there are six buildings. So we could just say that there's ever an empty building, but it is not a place that you see Airbnb.
No, I just, the transience, the understanding transience and then understanding how embedded the understanding is in terms of the use of the-
The other thing we do is we limit people, they can't have commercial vehicles on the property, they can't even have trucks. You have to have a car, you can't have motorcycles. So we have all kinds of restrictions to promote a harmonious, the quality of the life there, basically, that you, you know, and people, some people just buy it, they don't read the rules and they realize they have a pickup truck, they, we, they have to get rid of it. We enforce it very much because if you look at the way that was constructed, each parking space is more, it's a little bit narrower than most. And we thought about this, like, why are the parking spaces so narrow? Because they did it in 1987 and now everybody has an SUV and back then, people had sedans. And that's why we can't allow trucks. We don't, we don't allow commercial activity, so there's many things that we restrict. I'd be more than happy, because I actually revised the rules and regulations to provide the board with a copy of our rules and regulations.
Don't need it, you've answered my question.
So we're right on top of it.
You've answered my question, I don't need it. I agree with, I agree with Rupert, I was over there, yes, I was over there today as well. It's very clear that people can't come in through that, it's not as clear, it's not clear at all that people can't exit that way. And reinforcing that message, no matter how well you think you're policing that or disciplining that, I think is an important thing to do. And I just, I'll just ask this as a totally unrelated question. I am, I own a condominium in Vermont where it snows quite a bit. In order to get that area plowed when it snows with all those cars in there, something has to happen in terms of removing the cars so the plows can get through. How does that happen in your condominium?
It's a concerted effort. So what happens is, we have, right now, we have board members living in four of our six buildings and they come out and they just, everyone moves the cars. Most people are retired, a lot of, a lot of retired people there who live there full-time, there's some people who do work. Everyone has keys to each other's units and we manage it. Because what, what happens is whoever, we've had, last couple of years, we've had Bay Gate, who's our landscaper, do the snow plowing, we've never had a problem. And they do, you know, we had had problems over the years because of the roadway, it was dirt, and we had plow companies that wouldn't come in to do the plowing because it was dirt, they'd plow it up and there'd be big divots in the road. And so we had to, we had no choice, we had to do this asphalting to preserve everything and it's, it's harmonious, we've never had a problem. It's great and we've had great service from them, they come in, in late fall, they put those, you know, the snow plow spikes and then they come in and remove them in the spring, they do our landscaping. So it's really, I would say that the board, and I've been on the board for a long time, really seeks to have just a beautiful place because we believe that there's no nicer place in the pier. I mean, it's four acres, I mean, what part of the pier do you find a four acre parcel of land? So it's beautiful, it's significant to us, we try to preserve it and take care of it. And this, to me, is, is consistent with it, not having the gate, not having the fence, it really took away from, I thought, we'd rather have plants and we'd rather have, you know, hedges and we'd rather have beauty to look at rather than a fence that, wooden fence deteriorates over the years. And ours was just, it was, it was bad.
So I guess the, the charge before us is to recommend, because the zoning board's gonna construct the language? Who's gonna construct the language of what is a gate and what is a, what is adequate in terms of preventing that from being a public road, I guess is a good way to say.
Correct. So the staff didn't provide the language because we frankly weren't sure what the, this board might want to recommend. If the board is inclined, by way of example, to have the fence removed, then, then there could simply be a condition that the, that the approval is amended with the removal of condition number 13, is that it? Correct, with condition number 13 and that the gate will no longer, the fence will no, fence with the gate will no longer be required.
Yeah, because the, I can tell from the flavor of the three people sitting here that, that the idea of fence is, is not, it doesn't make any sense. The idea originally, I guess, was okay, but that was 100 years ago, right? The, the last part of that, that condition, that number 13 says, "There shall be an emergency access onto Prospect Court for the use by a locked gate of type specified under control of an arrogant incident fire department." So I think, again, my colleagues here have to concoct the proposal, but I would think that should be obviously modified or essentially stricken. And I, obviously, we want the emergency access, but how to maintain it in not only a useful form, but also a visual form that's, that's satisfactory to all parties, condominium association, also the people who live in Prospect Court. So what I'm saying is, we need a motion. Oh, you're right, thank you. Staff, any other comments?
So Dr. Neal, condition number 13, it sounds like you want to maintain the idea that Prospect, that that connection between condominium association and Prospect, it remains used for emergency access only and you, however you'd like to have the gate removed, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the last part of that paragraph, there should be only one entrance to the development of specific court, it shall not be used, Prospect Court shall not be used as an access during construction, development, et cetera. And there will be an emergency access onto Prospect Court for the use by a locked gate of type specified, the control of an arrogant incident fire department. So I think it's that area that has to be essentially eliminated and yet the access provided and a safe and visually satisfactory to all parties are-
So then, might I suggest for condition number 13, simply eliminating the second half of the last sentence after only, with the comma, so it would read, "There shall be only one entrance to the development at the specific location on Gibson Avenue as designated on the site plan approved by the board. Prospect Court shall not be used as an access to the development during or after construction of the-"
Of the development.
Yeah, of the development, thank you. With the exception that there shall be an emergency access onto Prospect Court for the use by the public safety vehicles only.
Correct.
You could also put a reference in if you'd like for signage.
Tom, you want to-
Before we proceed, I just, Jill, was there any abutter notification required here?
No, so there is not at, at the planning level as the board in this capacity for site reviews, since it's a recommending body to the zoning board, there is not a, that public hearing notification requirement. It is a public meeting, so it does go out on, on Secretary of State, goes on our, our town website and it obviously goes out to all the applicants. The public notification will happen at the zoning board, so I, Mr. Cullen, you don't have the benefit of having the public pre-notify your meeting for this application, no.
Okay. But it will happen at zoning?
It will.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I was told as well.
But does anybody here publicly wants to speak on this issue, subject? No. Okay, so I guess we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to project summary, Gibson Court Condominium Association, Tax Assessor's Plat E Lot 34-CM, location is Zero Garden Court Drive, I move that the application be considered complete and in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All three votes in favor.
Thank you very much.
Fire away. No, we're not done. That's just a warm-up, that's just a warm-up.
Mr. Chairman, again, once, once again, with respect to the same application, project summary, Gibson Court Condominium Association, Tax Assessor's Plat Lot E, excuse me, Tax Assessor's Plat E Lot 34-CM, location is Zero Garden Court Drive, I move that the relief requested for an amendment to the zoning decision dated March 18, 1987, with respect to condition 13, be granted with the following, with the following change to that condition, it would continue as it currently, as it presently is constructed. There shall be only one entrance to the development at the specific location on Gibson Avenue, designated on the site plan approved by the board. Prospect Court shall not be used as an access to the development during or after construction of the development, with the exception that there will be, there shall be an emergency access onto Prospect Court for the use by, use of the arrogant incident fire department.
And police?
Public safety.
Public sa, yeah, emergency vehicles.
Personnel.
Could I amend that to provide signage saying, "No through road" from the, I think in both directions?
I'll take that as, I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, second it.
Okay. Okay. No modifications to that? No suggestions from you, Jill? Is that okay, the way it was presented?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we vote on it? Did we already vote on it?
No. You gotta call the vote.
Please, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now you're, go in peace, there we go. All right. Thank you. So moving right along. I guess we are next, talk to the folks, Cherry is the, is the name, Tax Assessor Plat S, Lot Number 32. In summation, the applicant is submitting a request to demolish an existing one-story dwelling and construct a two-story modular dwelling at the above referenced property. It requires variances from dimensional regulations. Fire away.
Good evening, gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Christopher Zangary, I'm an attorney, 935 Jefferson Boulevard, Warwick, Rhode Island. I'm here today on behalf of the applicants, the Cherry family. I'm here with Ms. Maggie Cherry, to my right and your left. This is our second meeting with you, the first one was in February where we came before you for the same request for a positive recommendation. Based on the discussion and comments by the board at the time, the applicant has resubmitted a substantially modified plan. That plan, instead of being a three-story dwelling, is now a two-story dwelling, so there's no more need for the variance from the height requirements or restrictions and the FAR has been reduced by 1,067 square feet, so now the requested relief is .11 as opposed to what it was before, which was significantly more. So when I was here the last time, my, my goal was to give you the ability to have enough information to deliver a positive recommendation if you, if you saw fit. I think based on the resubmission that we've given you for this evening and the reasons and analysis and arguments articulated in our memorandum, which was dispersed to you this afternoon, that that, that path to a positive recommendation is far wider and smoother than it was four months ago. So we feel that we meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan, we're certainly not in violation of it, but we do need some relief from zoning for the items just mentioned. So what I would do is, we would entertain any questions you have based on our resubmission. I know you've reviewed this twice already, I don't want to beat you up with it anymore.
Who, you, you obviously have made a heroic effort here to, to modify things. I think someone asked, this modular home that you're, you're putting in, and the company was, was willing to modify things because they must have gone down the road at least of plans, et cetera, with you. Okay, that's, that's interesting. But yeah, my only comment is the, you know, the business of the scale of the houses around here. I drove by again yesterday and it's, it's a mix and certainly, yeah, it's not too far away, it looked like we have dormitories, right? Not to be crude or nasty, but those, that's like, that's not an arrogance and that's not what you want to do. So it's good in a way, but the places right around you are still, I'm sure they'll be in in the near future, but they're still the, you know, the one-story guys. My colleagues here want to discuss this?
Yeah, so, actually, I have a number of questions. One, and I don't know if you want to go to the site plan? That one. So this is a driveway, right?
Correct.
It seems to me that it's on the butters property?
Correct, so that will be fixed when construction happens. And we've, it's a gravel driveway and so-
But what's-
We attempted to like move the gravel onto our property line. It wasn't known to us until we got this survey done that it was not on the property.
What's there, now it's gravel?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed, noticed that. And then, Counselor, your memo talks about rain garden and I don't see that anywhere on, on the plans and I don't see it in the, in the materials provided. It's a, it was a staff note that a condition of approval was having the rain, the info for supplemental drainage report for section 7.7.
Yeah, Mr. Friday, that was on the original plan we submitted and Ryan, I don't know if we have-
That's the site plan that's on the board, it's the site plan that we have in our file, I believe. I don't have the file on presently, but that's- I don't have the file on presently, but that's what...
Yeah.
There should be a full drainage plan and drainage calculations that were submitted.
I can also...
Send them back to you if you don't have them?
Yeah, I don't, I'm typically during the internal review process for most applications, it goes from the building officials department to community development to engineering, and I did not, I was not in receipt of any engineering report from our department. That's why that's in our report, that didn't have an approval. So, my guess is that maybe that didn't make in the materials.
And then, sort of observation-wise, while the total site coverage is being reduced, your building coverage is actually, the house footprint, the foundation's actually increasing 10%. And I still find, still concerned about the variance needed for the FAR. It's still, still a 38, almost 39% variance for the FAR. And the, and the prints for the house, and this is a question, so it's, the staff reports a two-story house, but there's three stories in the prints, and then the third story has windows in the front, back, and side, so it seems to me...
It's two stories with an attic. The previous was a three-story.
Okay.
Correct. And the attic has collar ties that are only six feet high.
They're only six feet high?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, we added the dormer, so that, my parents are getting older, they want to retire here, climbing up a ladder to put things in the attic, or climbing up a ladder to have the AC system serviced, was just not as ideal as if we could have a dormer that goes up. But the attic can't be finished, it can't be used as real space, it's only six feet high.
Okay. And then, Counselor, your memo, your conclusion, the structure will not have a garage or an attic, and the applicant will use the study. I don't see the study in the site plan, in the blueprints.
So the study got removed when we removed the third floor.
Okay.
That square footage is better used for a bedroom, for our family's needs.
Okay. So, really, I'm still a little bit concerned about the extra amount of area for the FAR. And I saw your, in your memo, you point to a couple of the larger houses in the neighborhood that my colleague called a dorm.
He did.
And even, at least, at least two of them, I haven't calculated all of them, but at least two of the ones you just pointed out in your memo, the FAR is less than the FAR you're asking for.
I was going to add the gross square footage.
And when I look at the other houses that are larger in the neighborhood, like 42 Middle Road is 210 square feet, 45 Middle Road is 2,250 square feet, 45 Sylvan's 2,566 square feet, 51 Sylvan's 2,358 square feet, all those are on half-acre or more, so the FAR is much smaller than what you're asking, yeah.
I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's the least. I'm saying that, for the character of the neighborhood, it does fit. It is not the biggest, it is not the smallest.
Yeah.
But it doesn't impair or somehow harm the character of the neighborhood. There certainly are larger.
Yeah.
That's my only point.
Yeah, well, my interpretation of the character is different, but...
Tom?
First of all, thank you for the effort. I appreciate the effort, and it showed that you listened to what we had to say last time out. That said, I'm still concerned about the extent of the FAR variance that you're asking for. It's still significant, it's far significant than anything that I have seen asked for, and it's certainly more significant than anything that I've seen, granted, granted, I've only been on the board a short period of time. But the, and what's, the ironic thing about this is, the reason we have the FAR is because of the two buildings next door, okay? So the irony here is, while you're, and I get the comparison to places that are close to you, the places close to you are the reason why we have the FAR. So, that, I mean, that's a hurdle to overcome from my vantage point. It's a policy issue for the town that they kind of drew as a result of the significant changes that were going on. Mrs. Zangary, just some nits with respect to your memo. I do think there are ocean, they may be distant ocean views, but there are ocean, they are clearly ocean views from the homes that you said that there are no ocean views.
I can accept that. I'm not aware of them, but I accept them.
Yeah, I am, and I have reason, I have reason to know. The one thing that, and the other thing that I, I didn't quite understand is, by making the unique character of the lot tied to it being a less than 10,000-square lot or 5,000-square lot in an R10 zone is, all the lots over there are going towards, going east towards the beach or less than. So, that didn't particularly move me in a, in a, in a way to help me understand what the hardship was on this one. That lot is very similar to just about every lot over there, with the exception of the ones across the street on Sylvan.
Certainly, and I would say that any of those lots that are pre-existing legal substandard lots would have that same hardship. I would argue that it would be the same for all of them.
You would argue that, and I would argue that that's, you know, that's kind of what they are right now, right?
If that's the size of them.
Yeah.
In other words, if you're buying into that area, I mean, it's not, this is an old state, right? It's older than the United States, and there were small lots when homes were small.
It was a colony then?
One of the original colonies, exactly. So, when you're going back that far, you have these substandard lots that were well before zoning. These are not perfect one-acre squares, and that's the reason why in zoning there are the allowances for variances. I would, I would submit that that's the purpose of it. And then the zoning board would say, all right, if planning has determined that, while it's bigger than the FAR that's allowed, the, the purpose in the comprehensive plan hasn't been violated, or in fact, it's been met, and therefore, zoning board, you do your thing. Does it meet the hardship requirements under zoning? For the purposes of the comprehensive plan, we think it's acceptable, we can give a positive recommendation. So I'm, I guess I'm asking you, or I'm requesting, that you make the differentiation between, are we violative of the comprehensive plan? If not, and if in fact, in some ways, we're actually in conformance with the comprehensive plan, then in fact, you would say, we can give a positive recommendation. And then zoning board, do what you want with it on the hardship issues. So I'm asking you to kind of draw the line there.
Yeah, and the only, and the only, in order for the town council to have passed an ordinance to institute the FAR, they would have had to make, someone had to make a finding that it was consistent with the town's comprehensive plan.
Oh, I understand.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, the legislative body has determined that that comports with the comprehensive plan. But also, there are variances that are allowed, dimensional variances, if you meet the hardship. So we would ask that we get that positive recommendation, then go to the zoning board. If we can make that case to the zoning board, fantastic. If we can't, we get denied, and then we have our appeals if that's something they wish to pursue.
My last question's probably not for staff. Do I recollect this being scheduled maybe a year or two ago, we might have gotten the package, it was pulled, and in that package, there were letters from abutters with respect to this project? Do I remember that?
Yes, that was correct. There were, I think, four.
I think it was closer to nine.
Oh, okay, yeah, there was, there was a significant amount of letters in support of the application.
Yes, those were all positive, by the way, weren't they? Yes.
I believe there was one objection.
I do, I do remember at the last hearing in February, there was one neighbor present, it was Mr. Ferandi, and he was, he actually wasn't, wasn't really objecting, but he thought it could be scaled down a little, if I recall.
And the intent of the letters was to show my family's intentions for moving here, building here, and also showing our investment in the community and commitment to being consistent with the comprehensive plan, and living in an R10 residential zone as it's laid out in the plan.
Yeah, I'm glad you raised that, because, again, the reason we have the FAR is the two houses next door, and the impact that they've had on the neighborhood, and them setting an example for what can happen to other neighborhoods in Narragansett. So, one of the things that obviously people who are neighbors of properties like that, or something that's got the FAR, are concerned about some combination of short-term rentals or academic rentals, so on and so forth. So is it your intention to have this property rented at all?
No. My parents are intending on moving there permanently. They are ready to move there permanently whenever they can. Right now, the house that's there isn't, it's not suitable for winter, and they haven't ever rented it. They've owned it since 2005 or 2006, and it has never been a rental.
So, as part of a consideration here, again, given the tie to the FAR, to the neighbors and the, have you considered, and would you consider some, a limitation, deed restriction, for example, on non-rental property?
My hesitancy with the deed restriction is that it runs with the land, and then it's...
It does? That's, we're trying to protect the neighborhood.
And as an owner of a property, there's...
I get it.
It's a bigger deal than just what I can say right here.
No, I get it, but it is, in fact, what we're trying, and one of the reasons is, FAR is there to protect the neighborhood. If we're going to negotiate a way, in some way, shape, or form, the FAR, then the question is, how do we protect the neighborhood?
And my response might be, Mr. Callahan, that in fact, the Cherries have to comply with the town ordinances regarding rental properties, whatever those are presently, they have that obligation. Certainly, the town has ample enforcement, as I well know, because about six months ago, I was the attorney enforcing it for the town, and they're not shy about doing it. So I think that's the, that's the protection for the town.
I think you know as well as anyone, Mr. Zangary, that the protection is, comes with a few holes, and a substantial cost in terms of protecting that. So, I get it, I fully understand what you're saying, but from my vantage point, it's a substantial ask, and it's a substantial erosion of the protection that the FAR was meant to give to the neighborhood. So, this will be a tough one for me, okay?
Understood.
That's an interesting presentation there, Tom. The other thing that I throw out many times is, I realize that you own the property, your family intends to live there, but if you sit here on the side of the table, these properties change hands, and the comments that were made there obviously would, would give the town a little more protection. Moving right along, staff, any additions to the presentation?
Yeah, if the board was inclined to approve this application as submitted, I would just ask that a condition be added, that a revised plan be submitted indicating the revised parking, because that's not on that site plan.
Regarding to parking?
Yeah.
Certainly agreeable.
And the move, moving of the driveway, which you already commented on?
Yeah, and that site plan is on the permit portal.
Okay, that's it? Any comments from anybody else in the audience? No? Oh, wait, oh, wait, whoa, whoa. Come on up, y'all.
Hi, my name is Francesca. Francesca Bedell, and I live at 30 Sylvan Road.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, across from the 15 bedrooms. I can tell you from my observations, it's a business. There are wedding parties, limos, people for one night, over and over and over again. So a house of that size has that kind of potential. It's my understanding, and I just briefly looked at the plan for the corner lot by Will Clacks, if they, I just don't, he, the owner lives in Myrtle Beach, he's been there 20 years, he told me. I don't see him building a house like this and having it unoccupied. It's just, the whole thing doesn't fit, the pieces don't seem to fit together, and I don't know, enough about how to ask it. I know I have two retention ponds, that's a wet area, that, I know that a river flows down Walcott, and that water has to be mitigated somehow. It's just part of building, you have to do it. We had to put in the retention ponds, we had to get a lot planned, we had to get an engineer, we had to have it all approved before we can even think about the house. So I'd like to see, I think the gentleman over here had mentioned it, more of the lot before we even look at the building, like, what's going to happen on that lot. As far as a third story, I thought we were the last one that got approved. And you don't need to make it big for a staircase. They have elevators that are in tubes. I mean, my sister-in-law put one in a little lake house, right? It's no bigger than two of these lecterns, it's in a corner. There are ways to get upstairs without climbing ladders, that could be contained within the house footprint. And another point, when I was building a house in South Kingstown, I was in Green Hill Beach, we had, our roof went over our deck for a shaded area, so it's an extension of the same roof as the rest of the house, and that counted as square footage because of the roof. Now, I'm looking at this proposal, and they're including the deck, but there is no roof. The deck was an add-on, it's not part of the house. So to have that as the footprint for a rebuild is a huge change for that lot, because it was never part of the house. Everyone gets approval for a deck one way or another. So that's another concern. And I think that's it. And like I said, living across from those houses that somehow got past all of us is a very interesting experience, and it feels very commercial in a residential area. You know, God bless them, I hope they make money, but it's a commercial business. It's not, I have nothing against them. The people who come seem very pleasant and nice, you know, the clientele, that's not a complaint at all. But their wedding parties, and they're there for a night, maybe two. It just feels very commercial across the street from my house. And yes, I can see the ocean from Sylvan. I have a really good ocean view.
Thank you.
Steve Ferandi, 44 Sylvan Road, diagonally across from this house, and I never thought that the road that I lived on would be such a famous road, not so much in a good way, but anyway, I've looked at it, this is my neighbor, it's going to be, you know, hopefully it's going to be my neighbor, it's going to stay there, it's not going to rent, but obviously, a lot of what the points the planning board has brought up have dug into this like they should. So I just want to go back to the beginning a little bit. Originally, I looked at, and I was kind of surprised at the report, originally, it was 28% of lot coverage, and probably because of the size deck that was... And probably because of the size deck that was put on, I don't know if it even was looked at, if it was permitted or not. But I guess it's there, so they're able to use that existing deck to extend the home up to 48 feet. I'd be curious to see if that deck was even permitted at that size. I don't know if, you know, Wayne did the diligence for that. Nonetheless, this is what they want to build. But without that deck, let's say it was more, the relief would even be more looking for a bigger home. So, that's kind of critical in a way to see if that was permitted. Obviously, it's non-conforming use at this point, just a fact. And the floor area ratio at, you know, 626 extra is, like Rupert, like Mr. Friday said, it's 38%. And, you know, I don't think it's really wise to go that much to start precedent about everyone else that's going to come in with this particular house and want to have a floor area ratio over 38%. I know they're stuck between a rock and a hard place, and there have been projects which I've taken in before and shown the council when they were going through the zoning of smaller homes with capes, maybe not a complete square second floor all the way up to the top. I think the floor area ratio should be, what, about 16 something, 17 something? So, I think that's problematic if this gets permitted that way. And that way, it doesn't start a precedence or everything around it. And there are a lot of smaller homes like this. There'd be one in the middle, that's one of the lower level profile, and then the two large houses next to it. So, a lot of them on that side are, you know, one-story. And I understand going two stories, but I think that the floor area ratio is just too much. My house is a two-story house I built within the confines. I've got a little more than 11,000 square foot lot, and I built within the town's confines. You know, you have a lot of people going looking for the extra. And the attic is, was one of my concerns, and that was brought up. And that, I guess, it looks like the stairway goes right up to the attic, so they could be right up in there. So, is there any dimension that actually shows it's only six feet? Is there a dimension on the plans that says the top of that attic and the flat roof part is six feet, is less than six feet?
The building official reached out to the applicant, and the applicant confirmed that it would be six feet to the ceiling.
Right, so is that enough as it is in a basement where it's a certain amount, some things are allowed up on that floor? And what may they, could they be? I mean, a storage or a bedroom? I know you possibly could put a toilet up there maybe, like in a basement? You know, what are the uses that would be with a six-foot high? I'm not saying it's a real high place, and it's probably going to be storage, but, you know, just thinking down the road in case these people don't decide to keep the house, which I hope they keep it forever. These are some of the current concerns that the neighborhood was thinking about.
Yeah, in conversation with the building official, he, and with his conversation with the applicant, and in reference to the zoning ordinance, the height of the attic or the storage area does not meet the definition for living space. However, you could put an extra condition if you're inclined to approve that that area not be used as an additional bedroom or converted into a habitable area.
Okay. Yeah, because I know, you know, I know it's attic, but sometimes it's usable, and I understand. I mean, there's no basement here. It can't, it's very difficult to get a basement. So, that's one of the concerns that I had. See, you covered most of the rest. Let me look. Attic, the floor area ratio. I did notice on the plan, too, that I couldn't really figure out where the driveway was, but I guess the 800 square foot of parking is appropriate for that area. The rain gardens, I did not see. The drainage report, the attic height, and the finished attic, right? So, I don't know if that could be a condition. I really feel bad standing up here knowing I'm going to get a neighbor. This is really what the town needs, you know? It's really a shame that, this is a side note, but this town pits neighbor against neighbor because of what's, how incestuous is happening with this whole rental business and whatnot. Finally get someone in here that wants to come down here, and, you know, their ask may be a little more than what I would like. I built within my zoning. We have to give respect to people that have built within the zoning that they've had and haven't come in for it over and above. So, I think they can do the, they can accomplish what they want to do and get that far down a bit. Maybe not with a complete second story, but I have seen some buildings that would put us, you know, you could certainly have a lobby or a second story. And it's actually kind of neat that they have an attic area in there. It's a pretty good design as far as that goes. Just a matter of, you know, what is going to go in there? Is it easy enough to put beds in there? You know, it's a large family like mine, you know, people come over, but I get it. I don't want to prevent that. I just want to make sure the next person that comes in that decides to buy a house does the same thing, goes up that high, and it becomes an animal house with students and everything in there, or whatever, loft situation. So, it's really a shame we have to live in a town like this, but I have to watch out for myself, just like they're looking out for themselves, you know? And a lot of things would go by the board, but without the town kind of holding the line, I think it's, you know, appropriate that that floor area ratio was, you know, kind of breaking new ground. That's the main thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak? You folks want to respond to any of those comments?
No objection to the proposed condition, if it were to be one, about the attic being unusable for living space.
I just wanted to clarify a few points. The first being intentions and living. My parents currently live in Myrtle Beach. That's not a secret. They are living there because we spent a long time living in Virginia. They sold their house to move up here, haven't gotten it built yet. So, they've been living in South Carolina in the meantime. They're from up here. Our whole family spends weeks at, in Narragansett. We are around. My brother lived here for eight years, and so I, just to underscore the R-10, our understanding of the comprehensive plan, I have a planning background. I understand what you're trying to accomplish. I sympathize with it, and I do believe in it, and we're trying to add to the community and add permanent residents to Narragansett, who happen to have a large family and need space to house them. As for the full second floor and like the constraints that we were facing in our options for cutting square footage, we would have cut partial, like part of the second floor. It's the confines of modular construction that prevent us from doing that, and just the way that that construction type comes as a product. We're happy to put in a condition about the attic, and that's all.
So, no one's making this easy for anybody here, and that's fine. I have seen in town, not full prohibitions on rentals, but I have seen rentals, I have seen covenants that would not allow somebody to rent for less than 18 months. I have seen, we heard tonight at Garden Court, we have at least a set of condominiums there that they couldn't, they couldn't rent for less than a year. So, I don't know whether or not that spurs any thoughts for you or not, but again, if there's not any, there's not any concession with respect to how the property is going to be used, then FAR is something that I think is absolutely essential in managing the property going forward.
Unfortunately, I'm not the owner of the property, so I can't make any decisions about covenants right here. I know that they would be fine with something like in the realm of an affidavit or something like that, but I can't make any like full land use decisions right now.
Okay. Presentation's complete. No other comments from staff? You guys ready to, ready to move on?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the proposal in front of us, Tax Assessor Platte S., Lot 3248 Walcott Avenue, is not consistent with the land use element of the comprehensive plan, specifically Policy Land Use 2.2.
Excuse me, do we need completeness? Do we need a motion on completeness first? Hello?
Thank you. So, Dr. Neal, you could, you could take this in two separate motions, completeness, meaning they have provided all the materials that you need, and then the motion for the comprehensive plan. And that way, it'll be two separate votes. Typically, you do them as one, we record them on the certificate of completion, but you'd want to vote separately if the votes would be separate.
So, I move the application before us, Platte S., Lot 3248 Walcott Avenue, is complete?
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move the application before us, Platte S., Lot 3248 Walcott Avenue, with the staff memo of June 11/25, is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically Land Use Policy 2.2, which reads, promote residential development that strengthens neighborhoods. And part B of that is use building floor area ratio as a way to determine its effectiveness in maintaining the building scale in a neighborhood. And that Land Use Policy references Goal H2, which is support residential infill expansion that is sensitive to its surroundings and does not negatively impact neighborhood's And then the other piece of Land Use Policy 2.8, evaluate, maintain and enhance community character by pursuing development of secondary activity outside the pier. And part G of that is evaluate zoning strategies that can help maintain neighborhood character townwide. And with that, I recommend denial because inconsistency with the comprehensive plan.
Second?
Yep.
So, is that two votes, or is the vote that it's not consistent, and then a vote to deny, or?
Okay, so it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Yep. Thank you.
So, if the motion is, if the motion is to determine that it's not consistent with the comp plan for the reasons that Rupert just elucidated, then I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Do you need a motion on denial? Do you need a separate motion on denial?
We just did.
No.
Whoa, wait, wait, wait. I thought that was a motion to deny.
That was just on the comp plan.
We'll stay for the other one then.
Yeah, yeah, bang, bang.
Fire away.
So, I move the project Tax Assessor Platte, Platte S., Lot 3248 Walcott, with the staff memo of June 11/25, recommend denial for the reasons that it's not compliant with the applicable development performance standards, compatibility with surrounding land uses, and protection of adjoining properties, and availability of alternatives to the proposed project.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Good evening.
Okay, moving right along here. The next project before us is Taraska slash Musto. Tax Assessor Platte in our Lot 1032. You folks are going to be presenting. Location zero Elgonquin Trail. The summary we have before us, you probably have seen the staff's presentations, right? You've already seen them. The summary is, the application submitting a request to construct a three-bedroom, three-story dwelling, rear yard rain garden, pervious driveway at this reference property. This project requires variances from the dimensional regulations, a variance from the modified dimensional regulations. The property is located in a high-water table. So, in summation, you people are going to present the, I can go on a little bit. Lot 1032 is approximately 5,000 square feet in size, located in our 10 zoning district. Currently, the lot is vacant. Proposed improvements, construction with 38 by 32, three-bedroom, three stories, single family dwelling, second floor deck, rooftop deck, rear yard rain garden, 30 by 20 feet pervious driveway. Lot coverage will be approximately 24%. Site coverage will be approximately 24%. So, we probably should mention something that you are well aware of. The relief requested is Section 6.4 Dimensional Regulations, three feet, 10-inch height variance. Section 6.4B Dimensional Regulations, .04, 244 square feet. Floor area ratio variance, FAR. Section 6.5 Modified Dimensional Regulations, two feet, right yard setback variance. Fire away.
Okay. Should I start? Thanks for having us tonight. Would it make sense to start with the variances and then get into our use of the house, our intentions for the house? Okay, all right, we'll go with that. So, I've been here before, I'm Wally Musto. This is my fiancee, Janelle Taraska. We own the property. We worked with Gail Hallick Seer, who was here earlier, as the architect, and we also worked with Avencys, Avencys Environmental, to come up with this current design. I know this is the first one that you're seeing, but this is actually the third one that we've worked through, trying to get to a size that would accommodate our family and also be as close to within the parameters of the regulations as possible. The first two variances, the one for height and the one for FAR, actually fall within that 15% modification. So, Gail had advised us that we'd gotten to a point where the house would accommodate our family, and that hopefully that 15% modification would allow us acceptance for those two variances. And then the third variance, the right side, two feet. The main reason for that is not because it's a huge footprint, it is because of us being close to wetlands and having to move basically to this area of the yard to be able to build a home. So, we recognize that that is a variance beyond what the town typically allows. We're hoping for approval so that we can build a house that would accommodate our family. As you're probably aware, we also own the LLC that owns Six Elgonquin, and we can guarantee that there will never be a fence or anything put in between the homes to allow for access to emergency response folks and keep adequate space for folks to be able to get into the backyard or to the sides of both of those houses.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you. How are you going to guarantee that?
Well, while we own the properties...
Today, today you do, yeah.
Correct. Yes, that's, and if we had to put something in writing, if there's, if that's something that is required, we would happily do that, too.
Properties change hands, and if the question is distance for safety reasons, and we have an opportunity to talk about that, in my opinion, this is the time to talk about it, because what is available or whatever today isn't necessarily the way this property's going to be in the next few years, so.
Yeah, I understand. If we had to put modifications, then we're happy to have it attached to the deed or whatever.
Well, this is a safety modification, that's, so there's adequate. I think if I measure that right, that's what, six feet?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. So, if, you probably know, yeah, this isn't a one-story house, this is a... This is a couple of stories. So if somebody has to get through here, personally, you can't put a ladder up, right? So if it's up more than a story, you probably know all the fire regulations, or if you don't, you should look at them. So that, I understand what you're saying. If you own both properties today, that's not an issue, and there is no barrier here today, but that's today, you know? So in any case, I just wanted, when you said that.
Yeah.
Continue your presentation, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, could you say you own six and seven, or seven and eight? I'm sorry, seven and eight. The address is six. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. It's Lot 7 and 8. As far as use for the house, this is the house that will bring our families together. We'll be getting married at the end of the week, actually, at the Towers in Narragansett. Janelle's family is from Chicago. I'm originally from West Warwick, Rhode Island. I don't know if you want to know the whole story with us, or the love story of Bonnet Shores is really what got us here. One of our first family vacations, we rented, and then we came upon Lot 8, which was a disaster, and we'll have to go through the whole history there, but we went through renovating it and going through the process of getting right with the town on that one. We were fortunate to recognize that the lot next to us was available. We went through a few challenges in purchasing it, mainly the people that owned it didn't really own it, they just owned the tax deed, and there were a number of people who could claim ownership of the lot. We were able to consolidate all that and then purchase the lot. The reason why we're looking for a house of this size, one, we want it, we think it makes sense to be next door to the house that we rent out to college kids, just to keep it secure and hopefully keep everything within in-town regulations there. But also, together, we have five children. Hers are all middle-school age. By the time this house is built, my two will be in college. So we're looking to have enough rooms to accommodate us two, the three kids, and then an area where at least when my girls visit, they can kind of call their area. My ex-wife has, we have joint custody, but they typically live at her house. But I still want to have an area for my daughters if we're building a house. I just can't see not having a small spot for them. So that's kind of our story, yeah.
Okay, gentlemen?
So, yeah, I had looked at the modifications, and I'm pretty comfortable with those. And I also looked at the other houses that have sort of been built in the area on replacing cottages and similar-scale houses. So I have a question about the third, I don't know if you can get to the floor plans there. I think the floor I'm interested in is the...
The second floor?
Second floor and the third floor.
Okay.
So the second floor, the seating area, so I'm trying to understand this view. So this is open below.
Correct.
So are these half-walls?
Yeah, they're just balcony walls. So that's just to open it up from the square footage perspective. We had to eliminate space.
Okay.
And so we kept it open not to take up the square footage. And so it's just seating area. Like, it can't be used as a bedroom. There's two doors, and people would walk upstairs through that room. So it's not used as a bedroom.
Okay.
One of the big things for us is as we started, like, taking a look at what furniture would look like in there, it's not a place for all to hang out, especially for not watching the same thing on TV. So it's kind of meant just to be the, when the kids bring, when her kids bring people over or just want to hang out outside of their rooms, that would be the main.
Nobody watches TV. You say, hey, they look on their cell phone, they're all looking.
We want to get them out of their rooms. Stuck in a room is a problem.
Yes. So, okay, and just an aside, so my daughter, who's a little bit older than yours, but lived in a house in Washington, DC, and her bedroom was a space like this.
We will not be putting that in there now.
So, as you know from watching us in our discussions, we're worried about that becoming a bedroom, especially because there's a bathroom up there.
Right. Yeah, so definitely not our intention. That's going to be my man cave slash when my girls come over, that they have a place that they feel like is their own. So they go to the beach, they come back, they change up, we go to dinner.
Would you be willing to put, excuse me, a deed restriction saying it won't be a bedroom?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is easy for us because it will be the house that we're living in, so.
And then sort of addressing Doc's concern about somebody owning the property in the future, the next-door property or your property, I mean, a way to resolve that would be putting a deed restriction on both properties, that there's no fence put between the properties.
No, we don't have that.
I don't know if that addresses your concern, but.
Yep, good.
Thought.
I don't know if that would hold up.
Those are my, those are my questions.
For similar reasons, I still have an issue with the FAR. 244 square feet is a good chunk of change to give.
Was that within the 15% modifications? We originally had built it with the 15%, and that was it, we didn't go over.
So I can clarify this, and I think Ryan can, too. Because it's a substandard lot, or Amanda, sorry, because it's a substandard lot, that 15% doesn't apply necessarily.
No, that's not true. The, what I believe you may be referencing is that because it's a substandard lot and with recent changes. Yeah, the standards are increased by their deficiency. So in this case, I believe their lot's 40, 50% deficient in this case. So their side yard setbacks and their lot, their building lot coverage would increase by 50%.
Can you do modification? Can you do modification on top of that?
Yes.
Okay.
And last question is, does it apply to FAR as well as the setback requirements?
Yes, it applies to all dimensional.
Good, okay. Then I take it back. Having said that, I'm curious about the way you've described the property and the use for the property. Is there a reason why the first floor, floor plan refers to a bedroom there as the owner's bedroom?
Oh, that's just because that would be our bedroom.
Should say master bedroom. We continue that. Should say master bedroom.
They could just say bedroom. I don't know why I should put it in there.
I was curious about that because there are people who rent rooms and especially, especially in the world of short-term rentals these days.
Yeah, that's ours. And again, we'll have three kids that will be going to Narragansett schools, occupying the other two bedrooms.
Yeah, and there's no separate exits outside.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm done.
Yeah, help me out a little bit here. You're asking for almost four-foot height there. It's.
That's the 15%.
That's, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm sitting here talking to people, you know, they're squeaking out, you know, eight inches. Always the question is where we stop, you know? Three feet, 10 inches, it's almost four feet. Can you explain why that's a?
We're just asking for the 15% modification. The 15% that Gail had referenced in her first, when she was up here, the first group, it was the 15% modification request.
And it's more the recommendation from the architect. So this is how it would flow. I don't have experience beyond what her recommendation was.
Aren't we being asked for relief here?
Yes, you are, Dr. O'Neil, correct. So if the applicant didn't need the side yard setback relief for six feet when aid is required, he would have qualified for a modification, or I don't want to say an administrative approval, but he would have needed to notify all of his butters, his immediate butters, and had no one objected, this project would have qualified as a modification. So essentially, an administrative approval, recording a letter and whatnot. But for the fact that he needs the relief for the side yard setback, he's coming in for all, I'm sorry, they are coming in for all three, three forms of relief. Very much like what we do with the coastal feature, when the project is 70 feet away from a coastal feature, but it needs a side yard setback. This board, in the zoning board, will look at both of those together as one piece because we're not going to split the relief. The relief is, this is one house. It has all of these forms of relief to it.
So in essence, four feet's okay?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just letting you know that three of the, two of the three forms of, two of the, thank you, two of the three forms of relief would otherwise have qualified for an administrative review. That doesn't mean that any objector, a butter objector, could not have come in and kicked it right back to this process.
This is where, when they passed the modification law, we adjusted everything 15% so that, so what they're asking for is about where the standard was before we backed it off that 15%.
Before we backed it off, okay. Okay. I guess that almost answers that question. How about the gathering area? That's interesting. You know, we have wine cellars, we have all kinds of interesting things. How about the gathering area? Bring that up here.
It's like a place where you look for towels and towels. It has views, it has like a balcony in the front.
Yeah, so just couches, couches and a TV will be on the wall. I don't know if there's a better term for it.
Where, yeah, use your pointer, where is the gathering area there?
Where the gathering space is.
That's the third, yeah, third floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a sink, this is a bathroom.
Yeah.
Why isn't that a bedroom?
Because we're not using it as a bedroom?
Yeah, it's open. That's the one where we said we would, we would.
Deed restricted, they did not be.
Deed restriction, yeah. So it's a kitchen at, like I said, my daughters, when this house is built, they'll both be in college, they'll be 20 and 19. I'm just hoping to give them a space to hang out, freshen up, not have to come down and be with the adults. And then when they're not there.
So, and the, yeah, and your deeding, that will be, that cannot be used as a bedroom, right?
Correct.
And I guess the other thing to ask you about, I guess you have to visit with a CRMC because you're near a wetland.
We're here first, we have to get the approval here. The warnings are already submitted.
Before you go there, but you're well aware of that.
Yeah, the warnings submitted.
All right, okay, yeah. Yeah, that was my only other, my only other question.
Why CRMC?
CRM, there's an intricate map. The center of Narragansett from, what is it, Point Judith Road and?
Point Judith Road, Ocean Road, Kings Town Road. The interior triangle is the jurisdiction of D E N. Everywhere else in town is the jurisdiction of CRMC. Freshwater Wetlands, freshwater wetlands in the vicinity of the coast.
We have a lot of these up there.
Yeah.
And that sewer extension letter, you're well aware of that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else from staff? I think there aren't many people out there, so.
After the, I was looking around, I was like, is there anyone here? I don't know.
Yeah, nobody comes here for entertainment. Hangs out.
Except for us.
Except us, yeah, except us. So I guess time to move?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the project before us, Platt N-R, Lot 1032, Algonquin Trail, is complete and in conformance with the land use section of the comprehensive plan.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, three in favor, but that's the first motion. End of that, yep.
Chairman, I move the application before us, tax assessors, Platt N-R, Lot 1032, Algonquin Trail, with the staff memo of June 11/25, findings of fact and conditions. And I want to add two conditions to the conditions on that staff memo. One is a deed restriction that the third floor cannot be used as a bedroom. And second deed restriction for both properties, adjoining property, that there will not be a fence or other barrier between the two properties that would impair fire access. And with those conditions, recommend affirmatively to the zoning board.
Tom, what do you think?
I'm going to second it, but I'm going to abstain on this one.
You're going to second it?
I'm going to second it so it can go to a vote, but I'm going to abstain on the vote.
No. Can we carry a vote with an abstention?
We don't have quorum. You have a quorum. You don't have, you don't have, you have a quorum tonight, so two to one.
Quorum for the meeting. You don't have a majority.
Do you want, you want?
We'll have a majority.
Yeah. You don't have three votes, but it may not pass.
Okay. So the vote, the vote then is on the floor. You propose to be seconded for a vote?
I seconded it.
You seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're voting on it?
Correct.
And you're abstaining?
That's correct. Affirmative.
Affirmative, okay. So we have two affirmatives and an abstention.
If that passes, yeah. Yes, okay, all right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Okay, moving right along here. Great alacrity, or whatever they call it. Approval of minutes, I guess, is the next heavy on the agenda. So we're back to, where are they? Here they are, okay.
So.
So we'll take them one at a time because they're all different, I guess.
I have, so I just have amendments on the third one. I don't know if anybody has any on the first two.
I don't have.
Okay, on the third one.
So we're going to take them all together?
Sure.
With your, with your modification on the third?
Sure, on the third one, page three.
This is May 20, Tuesday, May 20? Is that the third?
On page 20.
Okay, page three.
On page three, under D.2 Housing, the third bullet reads.
Sorry. The third, the third bullet reads, time allotted for municipalities to update their housing aspects of their comprehensive plan is not feasible. I think, I think we used the word reasonable or realistic. I mean, it is feasible technically. And then the next one, two bullets down, where it reads, there should be funds available from the state for nonprofit developers for building affordable housing units. I had the words in there, there should be dedicated funding stream for nonprofit developers. And with those revisions, I move the meeting minutes from March 24, April 8, and May 2025.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I, three in favor. Gonzo. Okay, how about Ms. Jill? Do you have any exciting things to tell us tonight? No? Stories, jokes, none?
No, I don't. You will have, you'll have a bigger meeting next month. You'll have a plan at least to review and possibly some other things, but nothing, nothing directly to report out this evening.
That material you gave me is, that's a lot.
I take it back.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of.
I'm going to let Ryan tell you something.
That's a lot of material, yeah. That's only one part of it, isn't it?
Oh, yes, it is.
What we're going to be?
Yes.
So earlier this evening, while we were sitting here, I emailed you the regional... Yes, so earlier this evening, while we were sitting here, I emailed you the regional, the regional wastewater plan as well. So you have the drafted one from us, I believe I provided you the other one, which was the Scarborough plant, the, yep, and then you have the regional plan as well, which is essentially South Kingstown's plan, because the regional plant is not our plant, the one on West Moreland. It's South Kingstown's plant.
Okay.
But, Dr. O'Neil, we do actually, Brian does have something very good to share with the board.
So do you want us then to review those before the meeting on the twenty-fifth? Is that what?
No, so I provided those to you well in advance, because I knew it was a lot of reading.
Yeah.
Those plans will come to you for review and a recommendation to Town Council. It's part of the process for the engineering department and for their plan. It will come to you at the July fifteenth meeting, I believe, and we have a tentative meeting as well. I think I did a poll, and I'm pretty sure we have a quorum for July twenty-second, just in case you can't get through the entire plan, if you have commentary. I mimic that after the last time it had happened, on the last time the planning board reviewed the plan. It took them two meetings to do it, so I just, the plan itself is, there's a timeframe, there's a pretty stringent deadline for the engineering department to have it before Town Council. As a matter of fact, it was set for, it was set for a public hearing with the Town Council last evening, and you're going to ask me the day, and I don't know, August. So I want to make sure that you folks have enough time, one, and possibly two meetings to get through it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And also, I think in, I don't look at my email very often, but I think we were talking about a meeting with the Town Council? Is that with regard to what we were just talking about, or is this a separate issue?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yeah, I thought there was a meeting, a discussion of some type workshop with the Town Council.
Yes, so that email I sent to you this morning, which was last evening, the, there was an agenda item on the Town Council's agenda to set a work session with the planning board to go over, to talk about two of the previously proposed, or to talk about, I don't want to say, because they didn't actually provide what they previously proposed, but to talk about two separate components of the zoning ordinance. One of them is the fifteen percent modification, which we just went through a couple of times this evening. And the other one was the number, I think they worded it as the number of persons per bedroom, which loosely translates in my head to the household definition change, which was actually approved last night under a previous agenda item at the second reading, which was what this board had recommended in July and December, so.
Your terminology is persons per bedroom or bedrooms per home?
Nope, it was persons. Yeah, I believe the, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe the draft, or actually, it was approved last night, the ordinance said that the, the state definition said you can have, you can only have up to five unrelated persons and no less than one person per bedroom. The draft that you put forward, the recommendation that you put forward and that the Town Council approved last night states, not a hundred percent quoting this, but shall be no more than one person per bedroom and a limit of five.
Five bedrooms, yeah.
Five persons. Five persons, five unrelated persons. So if I have a, you know, if I have ten kids, I'm not in violation.
Mm-hmm, gotcha.
If I have seven bedrooms and ten kids, we're not in violation.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, anything else, Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's going on?
Last month, we talked about the Rhode Island Division of Statewide Planning and a grant that they, or a technical assistant program in regards to coastal resilience and adaptation policies moving forward for coastal communities. And the Town Council had accepted that grant, and we are working with our IDSP to move forward with a consultant at some point in the near future. And there will be some meetings some point down the line that will incorporate the planning board for reviewing those plans that will move forward and recommendations.
Is that specific to Narragansett?
It's specific to Narragansett at this moment. I believe we're a pilot, we're a pilot community for the program to continue going, moving forward with other coastal communities at some point.
That's, that's great. If there's opportunities to be involved, I'd like to be involved in that.
There will certainly be opportunities.
I got two questions. Journal reported last week about the number of affordable units that have gone up in certain communities because of the counting of manufactured homes and the number of rental units in terms of whether or not they've actually met the state obligations or not. So.
Section eights, right? Get counted now.
Well, I just, I was interested in knowing, and so the number of communities that now meet the ten percent requirement has gone up by some number of like four, five, six, seven, I don't know what it is. Do you happen to know where Narragansett landed on that?
I know we didn't land at ten percent, Mr. Callahan.
I'm sure we didn't, but do you know, did our numbers stay the same? Did it change?
No, no, so as Mr. Friday pointed out, you can now use the vouchers, section eight vouchers, and we did account for those, and I believe it was a half unit for, you're going to quote me on this, we were able to, let me just say, generally speaking, because I don't want to say some, I don't want to have a misstatement, we were able to count vouchers and also other half-unit, half-unit selections. And we'll be able to do that again in the future. So even our numbers went up, not, not close enough to meet our ten percent, but we are, we're greater than we were.
And then on the, is it the manufactured homes that are now included as part of affordable housing?
Yes, so I think that's what I meant to say, is I think they're counted as a half unit.
Right, and so do we pick up any, anything there? And the reason I'm curious is we get these requests from, for example, that area off of Burnside Road?
Oh.
Those are, and those are seasonal.
Those are seasonal.
I'm trying to figure out what counts and what doesn't count.
Yeah, those are, those are seasonal, so I don't, I don't believe they would count. Yeah, manufactured homes, we don't, we do have a couple of mobile home parks. We have one off of one oh eight, we have one at the end of Ocean Road. I would have to check with the housing authority on that to get you those exact numbers, but we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a big mobile home community here that where folks live year-round.
Correct, and I assumed it had to be year-round, but I was interested in knowing that, and then just knowing it generally in terms of whether or not we had anything that qualified.
Yeah, we do have that one at the end of Ocean.
Yes.
Any other business? Monkey business? No business? So I guess it's time to ask for a vote to adjourn. Wait, wait, oh, whoops. Oh, I thought you were going to.
I was going to move to adjourn.
Okay, God bless you. God bless.
He's stopping me.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn.
All right.